Minutes from the September eighteenth meeting. Does anybody have any additions or corrections to those minutes?
I will move to approve the minutes.
A second.
Go ahead, Cruz, say aye.
Aye.
Who was the second, please?
Me.
Okay, well.
We're having a report from you.
Um, yeah, just a short one. Um, we had the town council meeting on October the tenth. And, um, other than our regular reports, the only thing we had was this project that you're in here today. The project is in Leonardtown and it was just referred to the Land Commission on the Town Council. And then they will hold a public hearing after their November meeting.
Okay. Under new business, we have case number forty-six dash twenty-three Valley Investments LLC and Saint Mary's Assisted Living Faculty Facility. It's a boundary line adjustment plat BLAP requesting approval of the boundary line adjustment for the plat for equal acreage swap between the Valley Investments and Saint Mary's Living, Assisted Living Facility property.
Thank you, members. Uh, the subject property is located on the northwest side of St. Andrew's Church Road. The property is entirely within the thousand-foot critical area boundary. Their property is currently occupied by a single-story office building with an existing parking and private well and septic system. The recorded property acreage is two point one eight nine acres or ninety-five thousand three hundred fifty-two point eight square feet. The existing lot coverage is fourteen thousand one ninety-four, which meets the fifteen percent lot coverage requirements. The owners are proposing an equal acreage swap of five thousand three hundred seventy-one square feet between Saint Mary's Assisted Living Facility and Valley Investment. The property adjustment will not increase or decrease current desk density for this project. The Leonardtown Department, uh, Leonardtown Planning Department has reviewed and submitted the submitted plat and has no objection to the plat moving forward. The Saint Mary's County Health Department is currently reviewing the blap and no other government agencies are required to review the project for approval. Action needed today. The applicant is requesting approval for Valley Investments LLC and Saint Mary's Assisted Living Facility Boundary Line Adjustment Plat. The Planning and Zoning Commission can vote to approve, approve with conditions, delay or deny. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Just out of curiosity, Mike, why, why are they doing that?
So, there was a, uh, on the western, western boundary of Valley, Saint Mary's Assisted Living is going to bring, bring, uh, the water and sewer up that side. And then also on the northeast portion of the Valley property, the entrance for the assisted living is going to be coming in there. And the way that triangular piece kind of sticks out into Saint Mary and the assisted living project, it kind of defeats the purpose for an entrance there. So, it was kind of a really good swap for both of them, actually, so.
Anybody else have any questions?
So, just so I'm tracking, you're saying this is being replaced with this?
That is correct. Yes, so the top, um, northeast portion is going to Saint Mary's Assisted Living. And this thinner, um, I guess rectangular portion, uh, yes, that area is going to Valley.
And is that, it's basically right here on this one?
That is correct, yes.
Any other comments?
I'll make a move. I move to approve the request for case number forty-six twenty-three Valley Investments LLC Boundary Line Adjustment Plat.
Is this your second?
Second.
All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The second item of business is case number seventy-one dash twenty-one Leonardtown Cottage's Proposed Plan Infill and Redevelopment District. Request for a recommendation for proposable, proposed planned infill and redevelopment District of Parcel Two Sixty located at two-two-eight-zero-zero Lawrence Avenue, Leonardtown. And this is for, to the council.
Yes, thank you. Uh, so the owner is Laurel Grove Properties LLC. The consultant is our Victor Buckler, Professional Land Surveyor. The property address, as you said, is two-two-eight-hundred Lawrence Avenue. Uh, it's tax map one-twenty-seven, grid twenty-one, parcel two-sixty. The land area is twenty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-seven square feet. The current zoning of the property is residential multifamily. Town council referred the project to the Planning Commission at their October twenty-twenty-three meeting. The Planning Commission, after holding a public meeting, will make recommendation back to Town Council. Town Council will then hold a public hearing and make a final decision on this project. The owner consultant is requesting a concept plan infill and redevelopment district or PRRD recommendation to the, to the Leonardtown Town Council for the property located at two-two-eight-hundred Lawrence Avenue. In addition to the PRRD request, the owner consultant is requesting concept approval of a minor subdivision to divide the existing zero point five-nine acre property into two lots. Lot one consisting of point two-seven-one acres or eleven thousand eight hundred and four point seven-six square feet. And lot two consisting of zero point three-one-nine acres or thirteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-five point six-four square feet. The existing property, as I said, is point five-nine acres. The property in twenty-twenty-one had an existing nine thousand nine hundred and ninety square foot, uh, building, which, and I need to make this correction, it was a twelve-unit apartment building, not a ten, okay? So, it was a twelve-unit apartment building, not a ten, with associated gravel asphalt area utilized for parking. The property was issued a demolition permit in August of twenty-twenty-one to remove the dilapidated building. The property current setbacks based on the residential multifamily RMF zoning are fifteen in the front, ten on the sides and thirty in the rear. Per the Town Municipal Code, Chapter one fifty-five thirty-four, the purpose of a planned infill and redevelopment district or PRRD is to encourage the redevelopment of deteriorated sites while preserving residential character of the surrounding residential neighborhood. The proposed PRRD construction is for eight single-family dwelling units, four dwelling units on the proposed lot one, and four dwelling units on proposed lot two with a base unit footprint between six hundred and squ- sixty, excuse me, six hundred and forty square foot and one thousand eighty square foot. All proposed dwellings will be two-story. The owner consultant is requesting a reduction of the rear building restriction line of lot two from thirty-foot to fifteen-foot rear building restriction line. Lot one fronts on two through roads, which requires fifteen-foot setbacks from the right-of-way. Lot one is showing a twenty-foot setback along Lawrence Avenue. Lawrence Avenue setback should be fifteen-foot, allowing the proposed houses to shift to the west to allow the increase of the eastern setback of lot one from seven feet to ten-foot required, per the municipal code. No other building restriction line reductions have been requested. The maximum density requirements for property zone RMF is ten dwelling units per acre or four thousand three hundred and fifty-six square feet per unit. The building that was demolished consists of ten units. The previous density based on the demolished building was ten dwelling units or two thousand five hundred and seventy square foot per unit. The owner consultant is requesting a density reduction from the forty-three five six, or forty-three fifty-six, per the municipal code, to three thousand two hundred and twelve per unit. The required eight units are less than the density of the previous use, but is higher than the municipal code requirements without the PRRD overlay. Per Chapter one fifty-five fifty-five, Chapter B Parking Requirement, Parking Spaces, the proposed project is required to have two parking spots per unit or sixteen parking spots for eight dwelling units. The project has met the requirements of sixteen parking spaces for eight dwelling units. The property currently has twelve EDUs. Eight EDUs are required for the proposed Leonardtown PRRD. The remaining four EDUs would be held inactive for use with fur- future projects. The proposed project must meet the Stormwater Management Town Municipal Code one fifty-five dash seven-three D. Redevelopment standards by either reducing the existing impervious surface by fifty percent or the project must implement Environmental Sensitive Design, ESD, to maximi- maximum extent possible to the MEP to provide water quality treatment for at least fifty percent of the existing impervious surface area within the LOD or a combination of Section D two A and B for the site. The applicant today shall demonstrate per Title seven A, Section one fifty-five thirty-four three of the Leonardtown Municipal Code the following. The planned infill redevelopment district is intended to accommodate a wide range of land uses and redevelopment options on sites constrained by the, by the form of characteristics of existing structures and residential character in surrounding areas. Specific land uses and specific development standards for each PRRD district shall be determined on a case-by-case, site-by-site basis by approval of a master development plan filed currently with, and any proposal or request of zoning map amendment. B, the planned infill redevelopment district classification request may be submitted by the property owner concurrent with the required master development plan in order to be eligible for consideration for PRRD classification. There must be a finding by the Town Council that the development or redevelopment proposed for the subject property is consistent with the purpose and intent of the district. The proposed development or redevelopment of the subject property would be compatible with and not adversely impact the surrounding neighborhoods, including impacts from traffic, noise, light and glare and parking and signs. The services and infrastructure for the site will be sufficient to adequate the type of intensity of the proposed development. The proposed development would provide needed housing opportunity, opportunities, services, jobs or amenities, and/or would improve or enhance the character of the site. The general performance standards and limitation established in Chapter one fifty-five thirty-four six can be met on the subject property. And the granting of a planned infill and redevelopment district classification will promote the general welfare of the town and will, will not be detrimental to the health, safety and welfare of town residents. Action needed today. The applicant is requesting recommendation of the PRRD to Town Council. The Planning and Zoning Commission can vote to recommend, recommend with conditions, delay or deny a recommendation. And I have the consultants here, if you have any questions. I did want to let you know that per the co- code, I did a certified mailing to sixty-four adjacent landowners per our code. It says that I have to do a mailing, uh, with, uh, to all properties within three hundred foot of the boundary of the subject property. I have all the certified letters and the mapping and everything here on file, if you would like to see them. The, uh, consultants are here, uh, to answer any questions. I will be here to answer any questions related to municipal code and anything else like that.
Thank you. Um, do you have a presentation that you'd like to give to us? I see you have some things on board.
Yeah, we have the displays of what we thought that, uh, in large, uh, that's in this book that you currently have. My thought is, when I purchased the property, I just didn't believe the building was kind of what we wanted to keep. We started the design of a twelve-unit apartment building. With looking at that, it just didn't, to me, fit a lot of town. I was back building a big building just because I had twelve EDUs. I just didn't like, I don't think it fit the neighborhood. So, we readjusted and we drew the smaller homes and designed smaller homes that I felt matched and complied with houses, you know, across the street. Pretty much square footage-wise and, and things like that where I didn't end up with a building with a parking garage, young man. I just didn't really like, I just didn't think that fit on Lawrence Avenue or Church. That's how we kind of redesigned and where we, we landed here. I believe this fits what is on the streets that, you know, are beside us and things. This makes, I, I believe, some available, you know, to, to give each one, instead of living in a apartment building, just give to everybody. And when we designed these, each house has a, a front porch where somebody could at least have a porch of their own and, and not living in a, into a, uh, just a building, you know, um, with four inches dividing and or six inches dividing. Everyone here gets a little bit of grass and everyone, you know, it's kind of more home than associate and be in, into a, just a, a building with everyone sharing an elevator and things of that nature.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for them?
Is your intent for these to be, uh, to sell them or to?
No, no, never to be sold.
So, that we rent all the properties?
Yes, yes.
Why, um, why was the property divided into two lots?
Financial. If I can just say that financially. Don't need to elaborate. I don't have to tie it to one financial institute. I mean, it, it, I just not hold to one financial institute.
Have you done projects like this in the past?
Uh, yes, different, you know, not personally for me, but I've developed them and worked on different develop. Something I did building along the town was the shopping center, the layer sale. Just very close to this property here.
Is there a reason why it went to Town Council and then back down to planning?
That is the format in which our ordinance dictates it to be operated by.
Because it's a residence?
Well, so, when you have a floating zone, then, so, they need to have a initial review part of the process and then it comes to you guys for the recommendation back.
And then it says, uh, the Health Department is still reviewing?
So, the Health Department has not reviewed this as of yet.
Okay.
That was Valley.
Is that, um, something that we would be waiting on?
Abs- so, this, this is, uh, completely in the concept stage. It has not been reviewed by any of the, uh, agencies that would give approval. I mean, it will have to, during the design process, if, uh, you make a recommendation to Town Council and then Town Council says okay, then they'll go through the design process. The houses will have to be reviewed by the Fire Marshal. We'll have to have Health Department approval for the subdivision. Our capital projects folks will also review this for water and sewer design as well as me.
Thank you.
Today, though, we are, are discussing both the recommendation to the Town Council, but does that also mean we are giving approval to the concept plan?
Yes.
The way the PRRD works, if I can just, so, when we design the PRRD, it, because it relaxes some regulations to stimulate redevelopment, um, we want it, it is a council decision, final. So, it just gets presented to the council and they haven't done anything with it at this point. They refer it to the Planning Commission. You guys do conceptually give us the recommendation back to them and then they'll hold a public hearing next month and go through the same process you are. And then if, if it's approved conceptually, then it goes into final site design, which will go to, uh, all the engineering, stormwater management, go to all the agencies and go through, um, through that process and it comes back to you for our final site plan as well.
And in my initial review, I did state that lot two is act- asking for a reduction from a thirty-foot rear building restriction line to a fifteen. Also stated in there that they must address the ESD to the MEP or, uh, address the fifty percent impervious surface reduction. So, one of those two things has to happen as well, not here, but in that final design. And I wanted you guys to know that.
Appreciate that. Is, um, the reduction, uh, for that back line, is that the adjacent to the Mattingly lot here? On Pope Street, the property's on Pope Street?
Let me, yes. Um, no, this would be, the reduction would be to tax parcel two fifty-four, which would be the southern property line of lot two.
So, just right here?
That is correct.
So, just this spot?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, also, in the comment, uh, if you remember correctly, I had said that we needed to go to a fifteen-foot building restriction line along Lawrence and Church. Now, the plan currently is showing a seven-foot distance from the eastern, uh, property line of lot one to the two buildings there along that access. That needs to be increased to ten feet to meet the minimum setbacks. And then the houses would shift to the west by three feet to make that ten.
So, we're talking, these guys are going that way?
That's correct. Now, there is, in the PRRD, you ha- also, the PRRD also has the option of reducing that requirement.
If I could just add a little bit more information, so, we do, for this process, part of it, as Mike said, was notifying all adjacent within three hundred feet of the property, notifying all of the zoning owners. We also post the property, we advertise this as a public meeting and we also will hold a public hearing, we advertise that as well. We did receive some comments which were forwarded to you all and, uh, I think on Friday.
Yes.
And, uh, we did supply back, um, answers to the, the request for the, for the resident, surrounding residents of those questions as well and provided you those, those letters as well.
Is this the forum where if someone were here to advocate for these, that we would allow that?
Um, that's up to the chair, chairwoman. She, uh, can, can allow people to talk. We will also, they will definitely, at the public hearing, they will be able to also speak.
Gotcha.
And, um, as far, what Mike was saying, you can, so they have submitted, um, the plan as shown as far as the setbacks and you could allow it to stay as that or what Mike was suggesting is that those homes could shift a little bit to, and then they wouldn't be relaxed. We wouldn't be relaxing any of the standards for setbacks.
Gotcha.
And the, the, the PRRD is allowed, you're allowed your setback relaxation. You can relax, um, parking requirements, those sorts of things, um, within the PRRD. But the only thing I think that they're asking for is just that one rear setback in the density.
And the density, and, yes.
But as I understand it, we're just giving our, how we feel to the Town Council and they're making the determination?
You've gotten an approved, a favorable or unfavorable recommendation, yes.
So, um, the rear building restriction line from thirty feet to fifteen feet. Um, it seems like that, these are the rear of the houses. Why is that not the?
Because church, the, because of the road accessing Church Street. Uh, so you have to, because it's lot two, okay? And lot two fronts on Church Street. So, your sidelines would be to the east and to the west and then your southern boundary would be the rear. Because that's a lot by itself. If those were, if those, each individual house would have been subdivided, then the fronts would be on that access road and the rear, as you said.
Um, if I could maybe explain a little bit about what happened, uh, maybe some of your fixtures I can show, some of the, um, landscaping and such.
So, this, uh, this is the proposed site plan for four houses here on lot one, four on lot two. In comparison to the older structure that was there, we're actually reducing the rooftop, um, area. So, it's less impervious on the rooftops than what was originally there. We're also increasing the amount of green space, uh, that'll come with this project. There is a natural buffer line across the back that's existing that would stay, um, which can be seen.
I'm gonna put this up here so everybody can see.
Sure. Sorry. Natural buffer line that would continue to exist under this canopy here. So, this foliage is very large and we'd be building just in front of it, um, as the trees are actually going to be of property.
So, the natural buffer line, um, when I was walking a lot today, it, it, it exists on, close to Church Street, but the second half where the s- third and fourth lots are, there really isn't anything between the houses behind it.
It gets scrubber here, yeah. It's, it's not as, it's not as old growth as what we defined here in the first couple. There's, there's some, uh, tree cover there, but it's, it's certainly not as, or just these trees.
So, at what point would we, uh, I, I assume it's not during the concept phase, would we have an opportunity to say there needs to be plantings back there?
Well, they're gonna have to do a landscape plan with this project through the design stage. I'll do a review of that landscape plan and then either submit it to you saying they met the requirements or they didn't. And then if you think they need more, then you can say they need more.
I mean, if that's something you're, so during the final site plan, you're gonna see landscape, detailed landscape plan. But if it's something that you wanna comment, if, you know, give them a heads up about that you want to see more plantings there, um, that, I mean, that's something you can talk about now so that they know when they bring it back, but that is gonna be something that you're looking for.
Yeah, I, I do think that that would be important to, to create good boundaries, both in the back and also with the townhouses where, where the folks aren't necessarily happy with this going on, to create some, uh, some good.
I think we're open to that as well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking through some of the, the things that you presented about having a porch and having your own house and things of that nature. And, um, I'm conscious of the fact that the decisions we make today are gonna last at least a generation. The things that we voted on with this board aren't gonna be removable anytime soon. I didn't realize that these were rental properties. So, I think that kind of impacts my, um, opinion about it a little bit. But also, have you worked with the strategic Leonardtown plan with, like, thinking through these rentals? The, the, the neighborhood that's gonna be down by Breton Bay that's gonna carry us down to the vineyard?
No, I, no, this is, this is mine.
An independent thing?
I don't get involved with, you know, I don't even know what project you're speaking about.
Okay. Um, what's the, the plan for the town, the direction that the town's going? Cause you're talking about creating these so that they complement the town.
Yeah, uh-huh, yeah.
So, we want, we really wanna complement what is within the, the general area of the town? So we want, we really wanna complement what is within the, the general area of the town. And there is a need in the town and the county for affordable workforce housing. And I think that we took existing building that had substandard housing with twelve units and to replace it with new construction with eight units is probably the best, in our opinion, the best use of the, the partial to accommodate the needs of the residential housing, residential housing needs of the community at this point.
It's already improved.
Mine is the underlying zoning state for residential multifamily. It's not residential single family for individual houses. It is a multifamily zoning. And that is another reason that the purr overlay could allow something like this where there are individual houses. And there is another project which both of these gentlemen are involved with behind the old bell used car lot, which is where the, you know, Duncan and other people live, there's some small houses back there. How many do you have?
There's four.
There's four homes, similar size.
There are two bedrooms as well, similar size, square footage, and they also have the feel of an individual single family home, a two-car parking space, two-bedroom, one-bath kitchen. You have an individual area that is, is yours, you well, as a renter. It gives it, it's the same cottage, one little field.
My intentions are is to provide some homes or rental homes for, for young people wanting, starting a career that really necessarily can't afford thirty-five, forty-five hundred dollar a month mortgage payments or rental payments. And I don't think this project meets the size of what we have in that neighborhood. Where if you go to different neighborhoods that are being built in other towns now, the homes are a lot larger. I, I don't think that, and I think it's difficult for people to maybe purchase those homes, you know, starting a career, starting a family. I mean, this is something that I wanna, these homes don't exist unless we put them out there. Everyone wants to build big homes. I've sold these homes and they work great for people, like I say, starting a career, a young family, people coming out of college, a lot of college debt, you know, so it provides something for those guys that's affordable. And it's also home. It's, it's, I don't wanna be against apartment building, but it's not an apartment building.
But it's a rental.
It's a rental, but it is a rental.
Cause I, I think there's a, there's a case to be made there that when someone owns a place, they're more interested in the upkeep of the outside, the upkeep of the structure itself than maybe a rental. So that's something to, you know, that's part of it. I, I mean, I will compliment the, I don't know if we have pictures of them, but the designs I saw look like.
Bring your package.
There's a large over here.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I mean, I think these are very good-looking homes, you know, kind of arts and crafts design. And I am for that idea. But definitely wanna express that the decisions that we make are lasting. And so it feels like a, kind of a, a quick decision in my mind. I mean, I've known about these only for a limited amount of time. And so that's something that I'm weighing on here is we're asking you the questions and taking this opportunity to kinda spend some time with it. Is there a way to, I see the, so the parking spaces, is that material, it's gonna be semi-impervious, I'm guessing, or is that gonna be concrete?
Typically, we blacktop out of stuff with these things. We don't, I don't, I, it's hard to make an answer if it's not.
So.
It's actually a requirement, Sean.
For it to be blacktop?
It has to be either blacktop or.
Concrete.
And you're going blacktop?
I choose blacktop. Well, that's the town asking me to do concrete, blacktop is what I would choose, and concrete sidewalks and things like that.
And then since these are gonna be owned by you, the, like, snow removal for the road part would be?
We take care of that on our, on our property behalf.
So if I may add one more thing, so the, the landscaping and the maintenance, so we have the liberal properties and the liberal properties are managed here in the town. They are all, uh, the, you know, in the winter. They are maintenance and we were planning to have all this, you know, the landscaping done at one time by a professional landscaper. So that would, that would, you wouldn't have eight homes with the grass cutted eight different times. It would be more uniform. So that was the intent. And the building that was existing there before was to speak to the rental versus for, with you maintaining as a rental property versus a, a purchase, the twelve-minute building there that was there before was, was also a rental.
Were the, and so I'm guessing, so I was looking at that, I didn't realize it was twelve, that's a lot, I think. But, um, so I'm guessing these were, these doors opened to like a quad of four homes.
It was.
It was something else.
And then what was, what was the other part in the back? Were, were those like garages or something? What was?
It used to be, I'm saying it was a factory dealership in the fifties. And, and then it got converted into apartment. I believe the government leased it at one time.
There were some little offices in there, cause I had to go to a meeting in there one time and it was pretty grim.
So, Mike, the, the spacing between the two daisies and the two roses is ten feet?
Yes.
Is that?
Yes.
That's allowable?
Yes, that, that is the minimum that you can go, yes.
I was gonna ask, like, what they're asking with density and the other setbacks that are not, are those, in your opinion, and expertise okay? Like, the amount that they're requesting?
So the only thing that I can tell you is the one to the south of the, I, I think has no bearing, honestly, because most of your surrounding building restriction lines are fifteen feet anyway, you know, even on the roads. The only one that I would make comment on in my review would be the one that is along the access road between all the houses and right now it's showing as being seven foot, and I would want that to be ten foot.
And are they able to do that?
Yes.
Okay. There's just not a lot of room there.
I, I think you mentioned that before. Where is, can you?
Yeah.
Show me where, exactly where you mean on here?
Absolutely. So here's our access road, and right here, the distance from this dwelling to that property line is seven feet on both these. So if this is increased or decreased from fifty, right now it's twenty, decreased to fifteen, that gives them five feet, which they can move everything that way, three feet in each requirements. And it's not a huge change, it's just moving a couple things. And it's not gonna cost them anything in design, really. I mean, just pick them up, move them over.
And if you think back, I mean, some of you on the board, when starts register, Leonard's grant came through the process with the P U Ds, they're actually, the building restriction lines are set even smaller than that within some of the P U Ds, so I don't know what's in.
It's six foot, five foot?
Some of them, so in the, in the larger developments between the big houses and stuff, just to keep in mind of the difference.
Yeah, Leonard's grants are pretty close.
I will say that overall for this whole project, that I think when we were first talking about using the purr and being able to overlay it in different sections of Leonard Town, that this was probably something that we definitely had in mind that we would be able to do. So that when we had these apartment buildings, that apartment building, of course, it's gone now, but we were hoping to get it gone for a long time. This is the kind of projects that the purr makes it possible to do things like that, and that's pretty much what we had in mind at the time.
It's written right in the language of the very first paragraph of the purr chapter, yes.
And right down the street was our very first purr that we did a number of years ago. They did, they tore down several smaller, older homes. They have two, there's actually three duplexes that they built and sold, and they remodeled an apartment building, so that project is just right down the street from this one, and it's been very successful.
So in one of the, the comment letters, the townhome owner was talking about the water flow and flowing into and creating moisture and more, more problems with their houses. Can that, will that be addressed as part of this?
So that is part of the comment, or one of my suggestions that I made in the staff report. Stormwater management hasn't been addressed as of yet. If you look at the site design plan, the topography is showing all that water coming down that hill to the back of these townhouse units. I think with that access road, you can do multiple styles of design. I mean, that's entirely up to the engineer, but I think that we need to address that to help the folks in those townhouses, whether it be an inverted crown or something of that nature with that road, to keep the water from coming down and hitting the back of their homes.
Yeah, I agree. I think that'll be.
We have been working on the stormwater and a lot of the stormwater is designed. The, Mike just mentioned the crown. I think the road is gonna tilt back to where we're gonna catch the water behind the small houses and take that to be treated. And anything that would be on the back row of small houses, anything in the road itself, is gonna tilt back away from the townhomes. At that point, and we'll manage that water, anything that at that point I feel that will get to the townhouse will be just the yard of the townhouse. There's a lot of water that comes, that just comes across by me. We're gonna address that water and take care of that, and in doing that, it should eliminate any water getting to the townhouses. And that's our intention. I'm quite sure that that's what we've discussed and the way that is being designed. So the road will throw it back, you know, to where it'll, it'll come back to, to the back row of houses on lot two and then be treated where it won't have any ability to get to the townhouses at all then.
Yeah, I think, so again, this is just a concept in nature. So, you know, being in the design field myself for many years, there's a lot of things you can do with grading, simple, just simple grading to solve a lot of problems, you know, so. Is it, can they help, can this property help them? Yes.
But is there anything to hold them to that? And they won't, you know, so there's no liability that they're gonna end up with water. They can help, but do they have to?
Well, they have to certainly meet the municipal code, as I stated in there, having to treat fifty percent of that impervious surface, and they're gonna have to do it some way.
Right.
Yeah.
For LaShell, I'm, I'm kinda with Sean on the thought of rentals versus owner homes, owner homes. Just you think we've got it taken care of better. What, from the town point of view, are, are you all encouraging or discouraging rentals versus sales or?
Well, not everyone can afford to buy a house, first of all. I mean, I have kids that are, you know, out of college and, and they can't, they're in apartments. So, I mean, I, I think we need a, like, a variety of types of housing, just like we have some single-family homes, some townhomes and, you know, so you need a variety, and I think the idea that they're trying to achieve here, and I think they've had, how many years now have you had the other properties on Lawrence Avenue?
Since several times, we've developed it before that, so it's been forever.
So, yeah, there's little homes behind the Blair property now, those have been very successful and have been there for many years. I think it's nice that people, not, not just an apartment, it's a family, they wanna have a yard or animal, you know, a dog or whatever. I think we need different types of housing. And just, I mean, so it is, like I said, it's multifamily. It did have twelve units on there before. You could replace those twelve units and build a, a, a single apartment building. You can also, without the purr, do six homes, I believe. You could do six of these homes. The only relaxation that he's asking for with the purr is the two additional units and that one area of the setback on the, um, seven portion. But the project could go forward without the purr for, for six units.
On the parking, the requirement is two, two spots per house. So the, the, the four smaller houses on the back, are those parking areas? Those are big enough?
Along lot two property line?
Yeah.
Yes, they're all large enough. The one on Church Street may need slight revision. It's only fourteen foot there. It needs to be eighteen. But they certainly all need the square foot requirement of a hundred sixty-two square feet.
And again, going back to those letters, one of the comments was the length of vehicles, you know, a pickup truck with, with a full bed is, could be twenty-five feet long. Particularly that, that one that you said needs to be.
Well, so that statement was made, our ordinance says nine by nineteen, or excuse me, nine by eighteen. So, you know, until the ordinance changes to nine by twenty-two or nine by thirty, they're only required to build to nine by nineteen.
And actually, that was reduced a number of years ago, the same in the county. Now, all of a sudden, everyone's driving through trucks again, but to try to reduce the amount of impervious surface years ago, that was reduced in size in both, like I said, the county and the town.
Yeah, the county actually has gone down to even compact car design. Which is eight by sixteen.
And there's gonna be a, a meeting with the town council next week or next month on this, right?
Yeah, the whole public hearing.
Have y'all considered bringing one of your renters in to advocate for you?
We, we currently don't have a renter for this project, yeah.
No, no, for your other homes that are in town. I mean, I can't think of a better advertisement.
Yeah, we can, we can.
I mean, you do whatever you want. I'm just throwing stuff out there, you know what I mean? I, I, I think personally, less density feels better to me. I think I understand that return on investment, you want as many as you can have in there. Six sounds good. I think that they're very attractive. I do think about some of those things, like I know, you know, some of this ordinance was added in two thousand and six. That's, you know, many years ago, things have changed, things will change back. I think that's kinda some of the point there. And you're within all the rules at this point. I read through these concerns and nobody wants new stuff built by them. But I don't know that there's any reason to not propose it to the town council.
You're making a motion?
I'm about to, but I'm waiting for you guys to say something else.
I do wanna ask, is there anybody here who wanted to make a statement today? We don't have time to discuss it. That will happen at the town council meeting. But if you had a statement you wanted to make, I will hear it.
I have a statement to make. My name's Teresa Mackey. I'm the owner of lot five. I've submitted some questions to Mike Bailey and Mrs. McKay.
Yeah, we have read those.
Earlier this week. My concern is, of course, the stormwater management. And what he's saying is that he's going to have the property set up on a hill. How is he gonna do that? Is it gonna be dug out? That's the tree line. Lot two is my major concern. Obviously, the easement that comes in there is not wide enough for medical services. And he intends on allowing these setbacks for our easement back there, which we have, have rights of ingress and egress to, which directly affects their parking, my neighbor's parking. Also, he plans on running the road out to Church Street and has claims of managing the property when I myself have been down here a couple times to complain about him not mowing the lot itself. So that's another issue. I have to be dependent upon him for an access to and from my home. And then, as I stated, the contours of water that lead directly into my home already, and I probably would not agree with the concrete and asphalt that the intent on putting. Just to say the least, it is very compact behind where we live. There is no room. Uh there is no room and it's gonna impede on their parking. And according to the survey that I got from planning zoning, I don't see how he even has room for the development of the four houses behind us.
I think in part of the answer that that Mike gave, that all of these things will be reviewed uh because everything has to be reviewed before it can come, uh you know, before it's finalized. And that that includes this stormwater management. It's includes, the hill that'll be reviewed by the fire department, it'll, you know, it'll all be reviewed.
You're you're expressing um this road right here. Is this an access point as well?
That this is, the side of uh Lot One here of the property, as you can see in the townhome, that is our, one of our right-of-way easements, that's only, I believe, eleven feet. And then behind us, we have eighteen feet of ingress and egress to the property, um which is supposed to remain for us as residents of owners of townhouse, town, the townhouse owners of these properties.
You said eighteen feet?
Yes.
But, and that's what this road shows as well?
That's what the road behind it, behind the townhouses is supposed to remain, eighteen feet of ingress and egress.
And so I'm a little confused, cause it's here, right?
So to be clear, so the townhouses have a, if you look to the left of that, there's an existing conditions plot. Uh so you have two little squares on the plot. If you look to the left uh box, it's an existing conditions drawing. You following it? Yes.
Yep.
So that right there is showing a ingress egress recorded at MRB fifty-seven of Lot Thirty-seven. That ingress egress, if you see the dash lines, is eighteen foot wide. Along the townhouses, it's one hundred point six feet long. And then it turns and goes out to Lawrence Avenue. That is the entire uh ingress egress easement, okay? Uh now, that is an easement of right, easement of use. Uh Mister, the owner actually owns that property in fee simple. It's simply an easement of access. So the proposal is not to do away with that gravel driveway along Lot One as I see it now, okay? Um it is the proposed uh of the owner to utilize that eighteen-foot easement and take it out to Church Street, which the eighteen-foot meets the minimum requirements of the road requirements per the ordinance. So I I um can only say that it it's there now. We're simply using it.
And you, and you have a problem with the size of that ingress and egress because you think that emergency vehicles won't be able to come down in the future?
Well, no, currently, so currently on Mr. Buckler's property, there is a huge easement that goes in off of Lawrence Street back to that eighteen-foot ingress and egress. Obviously, with these new permits, he's gonna close off that entire access. So what we have access to is what is owned by the town, which is the seven-foot easement on Lot One and the eighteen feet that we have rights to behind us.
Oh, you're saying basically where these houses are going, you use right now?
That's what everybody uses in the townhouses.
Gotcha, gotcha. But it's his land.
But I understand that.
Gotcha.
Um what I'm saying is, behind the townhouses, where the neighbors park, um and with with the construction and with how he impedes on setting back the restriction lines, I don't see how he can build four houses back there. The 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 property is a half-acre parcel, does not reflect enough feet to place however wide or I don't know, the dimensions of the houses that he plans on installing. But it just doesn't make sense. And I feel like he is going to be impacting uh my neighbor's parking and our trash removal services and any chance for E M E, E M Ts or EMSs to get back there in case of an emergency. Um they would have to at that point, especially if there's construction, access our houses from the street. And it does affect the people who live there. We are residents, we are not customers.
Well, I think that the rest of this discussion then should really take place at the open here. Are we ready to make a motion?
I move to send a favorable recommendation for case number seventy-one dash twenty-one for Leonard Town cottages PERD overlay to the town council.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna send the project. I think it'll be a a nice addition to that corner.
We have now a review of the in-house monthly permits for September. Do they have any questions or comments?
Trying to make this a little easier, I started highlighting uh the permits for new single-family dwellings uh to kinda separate them a little bit so you can kinda get an idea of what's going on.
No comments?
Nope.
Bailey, so do you have any comments of anything else? Um, love with your German.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.